This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
I think it's all right if you abstain, Josh. There shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. All right. Well, I see it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call to order this organizational meeting of the school board. Ms. Miski, are we in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes.
Would you please conduct a roll call to verify quorum?
Commissioner Becca? Commissioner Clements?
Present.
Commissioner Harder?
Commissioner Harder has just texted me, this is Tim Nordine, he cannot find the link or password to join the meeting and is of course interested in doing so. Maida, if you could send it to him real quick.
Yeah. One moment, please. Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I had issues with the link as well. If he went down to the join, I think he would have been okay. Here.
Okay. Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Okay. So we have a quorum and we'll just note when Commissioner Harder arrives that he arrived after the roll call was completed.
Thank you. So would all those who are able to do so, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will begin the election for the president of the school board as the first matter in the reorganization meeting of the board. Abby Johnson, will you please begin the nomination and election of the board officers?
Yes, I can do that. So tonight, all the board members should have received an email with a link. And so after we have nominations, then you should click on the link that talks about president and then I will let everybody know what the results are. I will read them. So first order of business is to elect a president for the next year, which runs from tonight until the end of April of 2021. And so the floor is open for nominations for the role of school board president.
I'd like to nominate Tim Nordine.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a nomination and a second for Tim Nordine. Tim, do you accept the nomination?
I would be honored to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for president? I have to do this three times. So do we have any other nominations for president? And one last time, do we have any other nominations for president of the school board? Okay, so I don't hear any. So if you can please click on your form and complete it, then I will just confirm that we have a quorum for the role of board president.
Abby, I'm afraid I don't see that in my email inbox. Is that?
Okay. Yeah.
Problem.
I'm sorry. You have that problem too?
Yeah.
Maida, do you mind resending that?
Yes, I will resend that. It was as part of the board pact on Friday, so I will resend that to everyone.
Thanks, Maida.
Okay, I did get it and I was able to submit my response.
Thank you. Has everyone else been able to submit their response?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Thanks, Josh. I see your thumbs up. Thank you.
My vote is submitted as well.
Thank you. I'm still waiting on a couple of responses, so sorry for the quiet.
I gave you a thumbs up earlier. I hope you're not waiting on me. Mine said it was submitted.
Okay. I don't know who is. I have any?
Of course. I'm just making sure that if you're thinking about who has responded, now I have verbally responded.
Thank you. I can see that I have four responses, so I'm just going to give it a moment to refresh. Okay. I have, I think I have all of the results. I'm showing six. So with that, I will read off what they say. Okay, the first one says Tim Nordine. The second one says Tim Nordine. The third one says Tim Nordine. The fourth one says Tim. The fifth one says Tim Nordine. And the last one also says Nordine. So we are all set and confirming, Tim, that you are now the president of the Eau Claire School Board. So congratulations.
Well, thank you, everyone. I will do my utmost to live up to the example set for us in the past year by Dr. Torres.
So now, Tim, you can take it over and ask for nominations for vice president and then as people vote for each position, then I will text you the results so you can announce it.
Thank you. Just to be clear, must I ask for three times also for additional nominees on the rest of them?
Unfortunately, yes, you need to do that.
Not a problem. We will now start the election for vice presidents of the school board. Do we have any nominees for vice president?
I would nominate Lori Becca.
We have Lori Becca.
Josh, I will second that nomination.
And a second. Lori, do you accept the nomination as vice president?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other nominees for vice president? Are there any other nominees for vice president? Are there any other nominees for vice president? Then the nominations for vice president are closed. If you'll go ahead and click the link provided to you by Abby and submit your votes via the form for vice president, we'll move forward.
Okay.
I've received a tally of the votes. Our new vice president is our old vice president, Dr. Lori Becca. Congratulations, Lori. We'll move on now to the election of clerk. Are there nominees for the position of school board clerk?
I would nominate Josh Clements if he's winning.
Mary Ann, can you describe the duties of that role?
Yes. The clerk signs documents on behalf of the school board, takes minutes at the closed session, you know, acts as kind of a secretary for the board.
I would be honored to serve if selected.
I'll second the nomination.
So Josh Clements has been nominated and seconded and has accepted the nomination. Are there any other nominees for clerk of the school board? Are there any other nominees for clerk of the school board? Are there any other nominees for the clerk of the school board? All right, then we will close the nominations and board members, you may vote via the form for clerk. Unsurprisingly, our new clerk is Josh Clements. Congratulations, Josh. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We'll move on to the election of the clerk designee and I will ask straight away, Mary Ann, for you to refresh my memory as to the function of this particular role.
It's the person who stands in for the clerk. Typically, it is a staff member. And in the past, the person who has served in that role has been the executive director of business services. So that would be Abby Johnson.
Yes. That said, I will open the nominations for clerk designee. Do we have nominations?
I would nominate Abby Johnson.
I'll second it.
Abby, will you accept the nomination?
Yes, I can accept the nomination.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? And finally, are there any further nominations? Seeing none, we'll move to voting for the clerk designee. Please vote via the form.
I'm not seeing any results populate, and so I'm assuming you all have voted. I refreshed my screen, so.
Mine certainly said your vote was submitted.
Submitted?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'm guessing maybe there is a technical difficulty with this one. I'm going to try one more thing.
I think it does say in the notes from board docs, it does say if there's only one nominee, we can hold a voice vote.
Okay.
So we can do that if you're not seeing.
I refreshed my screen and now it is there.
Oh, great.
Okay, so I'll just confirm and then we should be set. Thank you.
So Abby Johnson has just told me that the clerk designee will be Abby Johnson. Thank you, Abby. We'll now move to the election of treasurer. Are there nominations for the position of board treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Aaron Harder.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a nomination and a second. Aaron, would you accept the nomination?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Do we have further nominations for treasurer? Do we have further nominations for treasurer? Do we have any further nominations? Seeing none, we will close the nominations. Members, you may proceed to vote for treasurer via the form. Aaron Harder has been elected board treasurer. Congratulations and thank you, Aaron. And our final elected position is secretary of the board. Are there nominations for the position of board secretary?
If I'm not mistaken, Maida, Miski would be our normal choice and that would be my nomination.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Maida, would you accept this nomination?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Second time, are there any further nominations? Finally, are there any further nominations? Seeing none, we will proceed to the vote. Members, you may vote via the form for secretary of the board. And the board secretary is Maida Miski. Thank you, everyone, for the process. We will now move on to seating arrangements. Abby, I'm not sure how we'll, I must have missed where we're going to, how we're going to conduct that virtually.
You know, I may have missed that as well. Maida, can you assist us with that one?
Hi. That is a great question. I've never been part of it at all, so I'm not sure how it works. I just left it in the agenda from previous meetings. So I apologize for any confusion.
So if I could just interject, typically what we do is we have a list of numbers going from four through 11. Board members choose a number from a little basket. So when we are together again, or you are together again, you can draw for those seating arrangements for the boardroom.
That sounds fine. That sounds like a great plan. We will then... Do we need a motion on this or can we just table it without a motion, do you think?
I think you can table it.
Okay, great. So we'll hold off on that until we have our next in-person meeting, hopefully sooner, rather than much, much later anyhow. At this point, then, we will adjourn the organizational meeting and we will proceed to our public forum. Citizens are allowed up to four minutes to address the board. And the school board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. Do we have public forum signups for tonight? It looks as though we have one. Jill Ritchie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a parent of a nine-year-old that attends Lake Shore Elementary. My three children have attended Lake Shore for the past seven years. And during that time, we have been a very involved family, serving on the PTO, volunteering at numerous events, donating money, et cetera. And all of this has led us to think of Lake Shore as our home away from home. It's not just a school, it's a community that we have been blessed to be a part of. When hearing the news that our daughter would be transitioning to Sherman Elementary for the 2020-2021 school year, we were very disappointed. However, the demographic trends and facility planning committee and the board assured us that it would be a smooth transition because activities were being planned that would make our students feel welcome. Now, due to the pandemic, there will be no transition. There will be no trips to see the new school, meet staff, interact with students, et cetera. There will be no opportunities to say goodbye and get closure to their time at Lake Shore. Furthermore, we don't even know if school will open in the fall or if students will continue to learn online. There are so many uncertainties. This has been a very challenging and emotional time for the students and parents. We are not even completely aware of how this pandemic will affect our children in the future. Personally, my child is scared, doesn't understand why she can't see her friends or teachers, and now she has the added stress of starting at a new school next year. I strongly urge you to consider postponing the timeline for the boundary changes back one year to give our children the proper time and transition period to cope with this pandemic and their new school. I urge you to relieve some of the stress that some of the students in the Eau Claire Area School District are experiencing. I urge you to honor one of the school board's aspirational goals, which is supporting the academic and the social-emotional growth of the whole child. Thank you for your time and I hope that this request will be on the agenda in the near future.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie, and you'll forgive me for not asking you beforehand, but for the record, if you would state your address.
Yes, it's 1911 Bell Street in Eau Claire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for our public forum for this evening. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you and good evening again. I'd like to go over the upcoming school board events. All of these meetings will take place virtually. On May 12th at 4:00 p.m., there will be a meeting of the LEAP Committee. On May 14th at 9:00 a.m., there will be a meeting of Demo and Trends Work Group. And on May 18th at 7:00 p.m., there will be a meeting of the school board. So tonight I have a number of announcements and I am very pleased to announce that ECASD has been approved for Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Fabrication Laboratories, or FabLab, grant of up to $25,000. We are one of 31 school districts in the state to receive a grant this year. And as you know, FabLabs provide hands-on learning in the subjects of science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics with tools such as 3D printers, laser engravers, plasma cutters, and much more. McDonough Manufacturing is generously donating the matching $25,000 toward the project through the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation, which is required as a part of the grant to have a sponsor. And McDonough Manufacturing has graciously accepted the sponsorship of that grant. The grant and the matching donation will be shared between North and Memorial High Schools for FabLabs. We have with us at the meeting tonight, Sue Teetz, CEO of McDonough Manufacturing, and I don't know if she is present and can be seen by all. And we also have, we believe, Sarah French, Executive Director of the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation. I want to express a huge thank you to Sue and McDonough Manufacturing for their generosity in helping us to make this. for their generosity in helping us to make this grant a reality through this matching donation. And I want to thank Sarah and the foundation for their partnership in bringing this project to fruition. The total of $50,000 will help us set up labs at both North and Memorial High Schools. So thank you, thank you, thank you for being our sponsor and working and being our partner and helping us to get this grant. I would also tonight like to recognize Eric Hill Phelps, science teacher at Memorial High School. Mr. Phelps was recently awarded a $400 mini-prep grant from Chippewa Valley Technical College to support his biotechnology lab with resources and tools. So congratulations to Mr. Phelps on this grant, and thank you for your dedicated service to your students who will benefit from the receipt of this grant. I have an announcement about the summer school program this year. The Eau Claire Area School District will modify its summer program this year to be 100% at-home learning. The closure of schools through June 30th and the unknown timing of Badger Bounce Back Plan prevent us from planning and properly implementing a predictable in-person summer program. By working with teachers and administrators, we are creating an equitable, accessible, sustainable, and flexible plan for summer. We are also rapidly developing contracts with our community partners to help us deliver at-home learning summer programming through their organizations. Creating the program has had many milestones, including program design, enrollment, staffing, logistics, planning, and implementation. And these milestones will be completed within a compressed timeline and will be posted on the district's summer school page, And that will be beginning next Monday, May 11. This webpage will evolve as we approach the first summer school programs, beginning at the secondary schools, which will begin on June 15. Elementary schools will begin their programming together on July 27. Partnership programs will be distributed throughout the summer months. So we look forward to continuing our summer school program, and as with many of our programs, they will be presented virtually and in a different way because of the virus. I also began my report tonight with the announcement of a large donation in partnership with the FabLab. And I want to end my report tonight with an announcement of a recent fundraising effort that was conducted by the Buildings and Grounds Department of ECASD. They heard that there were numerous lunch accounts with outstanding balances, and they decided that they wanted to do something to do what they call "Pay It Forward and Help Make a Difference." As a group, they felt that they had been fortunate during the recent pandemic to have been able to continue working and collecting a paycheck. It seemed like a small thing to them that they could show support for families in the Eau Claire Area School District by supporting the lunch program. The results of their efforts amounted to $825 that they collected among themselves. And that check will be presented to Josh Gutenberg and the Food and Nutrition Department on May 5. And they will be asking that to be put to good use as Josh Dean's in support of students and families. There are a lot of good things that are happening in this district during these very unusual and strange times. I think that we were all touched to find out about the support that Buildings and Grounds had for our students. This time, I would like to give just a bit of my time to Dr. Eric Torres.
Thank you, Dr. Hardebek. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can, thank you.
I would like to, I appreciate you giving me a little of your time, Dr. Hardebek. I would like to share some exciting news with you for my family. I have accepted an associate chair position at the Education Studies Department of Stephen F. Austin State University in Texas, effective June 15. Yes, I am sad, though, to let you know that I'm leaving Eau Claire. You know, they have very ambitious structural plans to recalibrate their curriculum along equity, diversity, and inclusion goals to respond to the changing demographics that they are experiencing in that community. And they also have the need to match those structural changes with corresponding assessment and accountability practices to make sure that their goals are met. They have honored me with an invitation to provide leadership to this process, and I have accepted. This is a dream job, opportunity that I could not let pass, like others in the past. The challenge is great, let me share with you, but not greater than my enthusiasm and willingness to serve the equity cause. Just a little detail, the program that I'm going is four times larger than our local program. They have 4,000 students at different levels in multiple programs at any time each semester, and 52 FTEs, or full-time equivalences. I will certainly miss the time that we have shared in the Eau Claire Area School District, and will cherish the memories of working together, planning on how to best serve our students and how to best serve our community. I have been deeply inspired by your dedication, and I am most grateful for your politiety and friendship. Hopefully, we can meet in person before I leave to say goodbye. My plan is to resign effective May 29. This will give us plenty of time to finish the paperwork related to the contract with the new superintendent and fill Commissioner Klinghamer's vacancy. I am very excited about this new challenge, and I'm saddened by the fact that I have to cut short my service period and leave such a promising working environment. I know that the board remains in good hands. Finally, for now, serving you as your president has been quite an honor, as well as a unique and rewarding experience. I have appreciated your patience each time I forgot to ask for a motion to adjourn. But most of all, I am grateful for your ability to remain focused, your hard-working sincerity, and your strong commitment to serve. I certainly miss all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Torres.
Thank you very much. And I know that, speaking for the staff, we are very, very sad to hear that you are leaving, but we are very happy for you to have this opportunity to further your career as well. And I can only tell you that it's been one of the highlights of my professional career to serve with you and to have you serve as the board president, and especially as the first board president of color within the Eau Claire Area School District. You and I have shared two firsts. First female superintendent, first board president of color. And it has been a pleasure for us, and I'm sure we're going to have lots of opportunities to talk more about all of our time that we've served together and to honor your service. So thank you. Thank you for what you've done for the students of the Eau Claire Area School District. That concludes my report for tonight, with the exception of a brief report at the end of the consent agenda once you have passed the informal report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hardebek. We now move on to the board president's reports. I will say, I guess, some things that are definitely old news at this point, since we made our announcement last week. But this is our first open meeting since we were excited to announce Michael Johnson as the next superintendent of the Eau Claire Area School District. We really are looking forward to Mike being able to build on all of Dr. Hardebek's successes and moving us forward into the bright future of our district. I'd also like to personally thank Dr. Lori Beeka, who are heading up our search committee. The innumerable hours that you put in engaging our community in getting feedback and guiding us through each step of the way. We could not have asked for a better committee chair, so thank you, Lori. And also like to thank staff members and community that took the time to give us their input, the participation and support that you have showed and your engagement with helping us to continue to build on our great district. Reminded me just how lucky we are in this community to have that presence and dedication for our collective future. Dr. Torres, I know we don't generally speak as one person for the whole board, but I feel very confident in saying on behalf of the board that we too will miss you deeply. You have been a great leader through this year that has been both productive and full of turmoil. And as I said earlier, I'll do my best to fill your shoes, but we're really going to miss you. I just personally have learned a lot from working with you over this year, and I wish you nothing but the best at your new position in Texas. We look forward to great things coming out there. And maybe the final thing I should do is say welcome to our newest board member, Josh Clements. Welcome, Josh. It's great to have you, and we look forward to working with you for the next year and years. That does it for me, I guess. We'll move on to our student representative report. So Morgan Prem.
About school activities. But I did want to share with you guys a little bit about how staff and students and parents are staying connected during this time. I'd like to send out a special thank you to the Student Services at both North and Memorial, who took the time to put together a collaborative Student Services Canvas course to help students stay on top of their work and keep everybody informed during this unprecedented time. That being said, they've been incredibly helpful in helping students to prepare for online AP testing, which will be coming up in the next two weeks. Another way that students have been staying connected is through social media platforms. Students have been sharing their future plans, as well as high school memories on both Instagram and Facebook in order to stay connected during this unprecedented time. And that is all I have to share with you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are board committee reports. We will start with budget development.
Thank you, President Erdine. We did meet budget development on April 28 and covered a few topics, primarily the preparation for the referendum discussion and looking at surveys to send out, developing a survey to send out to help develop those questions. We also got an update from the Revenue Committee on a couple of different ideas for revenue that we're going to continue developing. And we are waiting for, I think, some outcome from our next work session to help form the fullness of the next agenda. That's what I've got for now.
Thank you. Demographic trends and facilities planning, which is usually me, but I don't believe that demographic trends and facilities planning has met since then. Ms. Kohler, do you have any?
Sure, I was unsure if you wanted me to update. We've not met since the last board meeting. We do have a work session planned for this Thursday to look at more long-term planning at the elementary level, and then a meeting of the full committee will be next week.
Thank you. LEAP?
I can update on that one as well.
Thank you.
The LEAP Committee has not met since the last time, since the last board meeting, but is scheduled to meet on May 12.
And policy and governance.
Policy and governance met last week, and we reviewed the language of the proposed policy to regulate the relationship between the Eau Claire Area School District and the Public Schools Foundation, which is for your approval tonight in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Two other items that are not ready, but are connected to students grouping policies.
Thank you.
For my report.
Thank you. As far as the legislative report goes, given the ongoing pandemic, the legislature and governor have been contemplating how to withstand the impact that our safer-at-home order will have on the state budget. The current Bynion budget is built on projected revenue growth that did not, of course, predict our current public health crisis. Several ideas and plans are in the works, including a potential budget repair bill to address what Governor Evers currently predicts will be around a $2 billion shortfall. The Speaker of the Assembly has proposed a freeze in state spending to this year's level during the second year of the budget, which would mean that funding school districts we're planning to receive as an increase may not come to fruition for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. No decisions have been made to date, and we will continue to monitor the situation. And I know that Abby Johnson and her team are certainly working hard, probably looking at multiple possibilities and trying to construct budgets for however it comes out. And thank you for that work as it's ongoing, Abby. I would like to note that during our previous spring election, education referendums around the state were passed at a very high rate, indicating in general statewide support for public education. And we know that the Eau Claire community also values our public schools and our districts, and we will continue to ask for that support going forward as we consider a referendum next spring. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Resolution Agenda. The board will consider approval of the Consent Resolution Agenda items, and has been furnished with background material for each item or has discussed it at previous meeting. These will be acted on with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The items for our consent agenda tonight are minutes of April 20, 2020, minutes of closed session of April 20, 2020, minutes of closed session of April 21, 2020, minutes of closed session of April 22, 2020, human resources employment report, five-year capital bids, final notice of non-renewal of teachers with limited-term contracts, final notice of non-renewal of teachers due to reduction in force, re-employment of certified staff for the 2020-2021 school year, donation repurpose for Ulrich Track Project, and proposed policy 840.1, relationship with the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation. And I would like that one pulled, please. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items 10.2 through 10.11.
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Harder, Harder, excuse me, and seconded by Dr. Beeka. There is a financial item here, so we'll take a roll call vote. There is a financial item here, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beka?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Dr. Hardbeck, I believe I'll turn it over to you now before we discuss the one item.
All right. Thank you very much. With the approval of the Employment Report, you approved the appointment of Diana Lesneski as the next Principal of Putnam Heights Elementary School. Diana earned a Bachelor of Science Degree in Elementary Education from Northland College in 2003 and a Master's Degree in Education from St. Mary's University in 2010. She holds licenses through the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction as a Director of Instruction, a Principal, and is both a Grade 1 through 8th Grade Teacher and as a Social Studies Teacher. Diana has been with the Toma Area School District as the Principal at Miller Elementary School since 2016. Prior to this, she worked as a Middle School Principal from 2013 to 2016 at Webster Middle School in the Webster School District. During her time at Webster School District, she also worked as the Curriculum and District Assessment Coordinator. And prior to that, between 2004 and 2013, she taught 1st Grade, 2nd Grade, and 7th Grade at the School District of Ashland. Diana will be joining the Eau Claire Area School District on July 1st, and we look forward to the leadership that she's going to bring to Putnam Heights Elementary School. Diana, I think is in virtual audio. Is it possible to?
We aren't able to get her on the screen, but we can unmute her and she can say hello.
Okay. Diana, we hope to have you. Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Hardbeck, for that introduction. I wish I could be there in person to meet everybody, but I appreciate the ability to at least speak with you virtually. I am very excited, and thank you very much for allowing me to become part of the Eau Claire Area School District Team. And I'm honored to become Putnam Heights' new Elementary Principal. I really look forward to meeting everybody in person, the staff and the students and the parents and the administrative team. But everybody's been very friendly and helpful, so I really appreciate that. And my husband and I are genuinely excited about becoming part of the Eau Claire community. We actually already had somebody come look at our house for sale, so hopefully that'll happen quickly.
Well, Diana, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. And typically, we have, you know, our person stand up and wave, and you couldn't do that, so it was good to hear your voice. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm waving. Imagine me waving. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, with your approval of the Employment Report, you approved the resignation of Paul Urin from South Middle School as their principal. He had previously worked in Lady Smith. He had been the Director of Teaching and Learning in the Elswood Community Schools District. He also previously served as the Principal of a Middle School in the Southwest Wisconsin Communities of Gainesville-Etchedillon as well as the Elwors Community School District. Paul has accepted a position as a Principal in the Marshall Islands, so he will be now working internationally. But we hope that he will maintain his connections and ties to Eau Claire, and we wish him the very, very best. And I don't know if he's online with us or not. So since I'm hearing, I'm not hearing that he is, we will wish him well and thank him for his service to the Eau Claire Area School District.
Dr. Hardbeck, I am here, and I do wish to thank this Eau Claire Area School District for the opportunity to work as South Middle Schools' Principal for the past year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Item 10.12, Proposed Policy 840.1. I asked for it to be pulled because we did receive a memo responding to some of the questions that I asked at our last board meeting. And it was very helpful. I do understand some of the points in which our legal counsel has suggested the policy and some of the other facets of it. However, I just didn't feel like I had all of the information for myself to feel comfortable approving it. At this time, I wanted to, I personally just wanted to see it worked on a little bit more, so I didn't want to put it through the Consent Agenda. At this time, I would open it up to any of my colleagues for comments or motion, one way or the other, on the item.
When we're thinking of the possibility of incorporating some of the thoughts from the foundation, I think, as I read it, some of these points under question didn't feel like they had a lot of room to move. They were, seemed sort of, some of them came back as simply legal requirements. Then there were others that I think were more... Is this, is this the question on the table? Should we kind of kick it back for more development? Or?
That was certainly, that was certainly what I was feeling personally. But, you know, a motion could be made to approve it tonight. It could be made to reject it tonight, and it would return to Policy and Governance. But I just didn't feel comfortable going through and approving it in the Consent Resolution Agenda.
I guess, this is Lori. I would, I need some more understanding in the areas of the policy that might or do contradict current policies of the Community Foundation. So I don't have a full understanding of how that meshes together. I guess I'd like to see it go back. I would say for me, in our own policy, probably the point that I really need more understanding is that the role of the Superintendent in the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation. That's the one I feel most murkiest about.
Thank you, Dr. Beka. Sorry, Commissioner Lyons.
I do have some experience in foundations and fundraising and how they interact with a state entity. UW-Stout, of course, has a foundation. And I do understand the desire and the legal requirement, really, to have the separateness of that independent foundation from the school itself. I didn't have any issues with anything that was in the policy. I felt fairly comfortable with it. But I do have that basic knowledge.
Thank you.
I can speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Torres.
We worked on this language for several months with, at least that I can recall, three or four opportunities from the School Board, from the Public Schools Foundation representatives. And there are at least three points that we wanted to make sure that were clearly expressed in the policy that is in front of you. The first one, that it is because of the nature of the School Board itself, the School Board, not the Public Schools Foundation, the School Board, that the responsibility of accepting or denying donations should fall on the elected officials. That could not be relinquished or transferred to a third party, which was the desire of the Public Schools Foundation. They understood that. So that's reflected in the language that is in front of you. The second one, it needs to be very clear that while the Public Schools Foundation's goal is to serve and assist the area, the Eau Claire Area School District and the students of the Eau Claire Area School District. These are two different entities with its own accountability rules. That's why legal counsel explained to us, and we understood, that the Superintendent should not be a voting member of the Public Schools Foundation just to avoid any situation where a majority vote was taken against the Superintendent's on a view. So the language indicates that she is, or he is invited to the Public School Board Sessions with a voice, but will never, you know, present a vote because that's not the role of the Superintendent. And in that way, we prevent any situation of conflict. The rest of the policy is what we are already doing, that is securing the use of central office space and being part of the, you know, logistics of the central office to facilitate the work. So those are the three main elements. We received counsel from our lawyers that having a policy clearly stated as this one would make it clear for our current board and the boards in the future that there's clear guidelines when we relate to a foundation or any other, you know, organism that wants to help us in meeting our goals. If we had a contract or an agreement or an MOU with a third party, then it would be harder to change those rules because it would require a double level of decision-making. And we thought that was completely unnecessary. So that's why the Policy and Governance was recommending the approval of this language.
So I'm just going to ask about the one point about the Superintendent. I think, so the current bylaws for the Public Schools Foundation, that the Superintendent and a board member are, serve in a non-voting role. And so I, with the, I think, the Superintendent, has the Superintendent always been non-voting? Or they are currently non-voting? And so I guess if we remove them as part of the board, it's hard for me to understand how there's, like, the continuity in communication. I don't, I don't understand the, like, what's the structure that enables effective communication to happen?
There are two ways of communication. The language indicates that, from our part, meaning the district's part, the executive from the Public School will be invited to meetings where the needs of the district will be presented so that the foundation could include them into their fundraising plans in the short and long run. On their side, they want the participation of representatives from the school district. So the, with voice. So that the line of communication is there. It has not changed.
You know, I can speak to how it is structured at UW-Stout. And that is that the Chancellor of the Institution, he doesn't serve on the board, or she doesn't serve on the board in this state now. But they attend all the meetings. They're, they are interwoven in the operations of the foundation, but it is still very separate. Foundation is a separate 501(c)(3), and I know that other UW institutions have actually found themselves in a little bit of turmoil, and even in the newspapers, when the officers of the receiving entity, which in this case would be a University of Wisconsin institution, was too involved in the actual determination of how the gift was being delivered to the institution. I'm comfortable with the wording. If other board members are not comfortable, I certainly understand that. And due diligence in getting more information is always, I think, the best practice. I am very comfortable with what's been put in front of this. I wouldn't... Sorry, go ahead.
I'll just add that it is, it should always be very clear that the Superintendent works exclusively for the area school district. And the Superintendent should always avoid all indications of membership on the Public Schools Foundation so that conflict of interest signs are not sent. So along the lines of what you just said.
So if I may, if we're, so the question about voting, I think, seems pretty clear in the desire to not have the Superintendent vote. In terms of attendance, it's to help, Eric, if I'm hearing you, it was there to, the removal, as a non-voting member of the Superintendent from that board, was to strengthen that perception of separation and help clarify it. Am I missing anything?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. And, you know, the presence would secure that line of communication. uh, line of communicate, that permanent line of communication back and forth. In the same way, we have included language for the executive from the Public School Foundation to be present at, um, Eau Claire Area School District, uh, uh, budget meetings, for example, to say, the school foundation, uh, here are some items that we need your help, and here are these other items where we would like your help, so that you can, you know, organize and plan for your, uh, funding efforts. So it's on both sides.
I guess I'm feel generally comfortable with the, uh, you know, point five wording of this, which talks about the, the invitation of the superintendent, uh, but excluding the membership of superintendent, uh, it's, it does, and, if there's a problem with it, I'm not, it's not clear to me what it is. And just to clarify, just if there's a problem with it, it's not clear to me what it is in terms of, we have, we have the communication happening through the, through the invitation. We have the non-voting happening as is sort of required for that separation and through, from legal advice. And this seems to allow for both of those, but it, it may be missing something that I'm not seeing, uh, in, in the way it's worded that's different from today, or something different than what we might want.
Sure. For me, I've gotten, uh, at least a few communications from the Sarah French at the foundation, um, just asking for more opportunity to work on this and, and have a more full discussion. I understand they've been able, they've been able to have public comments, uh, a few times, but they were asking for a fuller discussion about the issues. Dr. Torres, I think you've, you've cleared up a number of the points on the policy itself for me, um, but I, I still just did not, I, I still want to see more, uh, collaboration, I guess, going into this, going forward. That's for me personally. Um, certainly, you know, that's, that's where I'm coming from. And so the, the problem is not specific to me to say it's exactly this one item. Uh, it's just a, an opportunity. I think it, it doesn't feel complete to me at this point.
Uh, we have, um, exchanged extensive communication, both oral and written, uh, with, um, the representatives from the Public Schools Foundation. Um, uh, and the language that is in front of you, uh, summarizes, uh, what we think is the best policy for, uh, the Eau Claire Area School District. Um, I don't think at this point there isn't, uh, anything new that they could say for which we have not already provided a response.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion then, Dr. Torres?
I move to approve the language, um, proposed by the Policy and Governance Committee.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Moved for approval by Dr. Torres, seconded by Commissioner Lyons. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign, aye? Any abstentions? I don't believe so. Thank you. The motion passes. We'll now move on to the individually considered resolutions. Uh, I have a presentation regarding the Ulrich Trust Memorial High School Track Project.
Okay, that's me. I'm getting ready to share my screen. And, um, I've got one more step. Hold on. Okay, I believe you can all see my screen. Can you give me a thumbs up? Tim, I saw your nod. Thank you very much. Um, so tonight I am very excited to present, um, an update on the Memorial High School Track Project, um, related to the Ulrich, um, Trust. So the first thing I wanted to share with the board and also the community is a statement on behalf of one of the trustees. And so he wanted to share that as a trustee to the Ulrich Trust, we are making this offer to the Eau Claire School Districts in hope that we can make a difference for the students of Memorial High School and the citizens of Eau Claire. And that came directly from Dale Sutherland Senior, who is one of the trustees, um, that we've been working very closely with to, um, as part of this project. Well, you should remember, back in August, the school board approved a donation for $250,000 for the, some things at the track. And that $250,000 was to include the all-weather surface and striping, the electrical outlets, and the chain link fence and gate. As we worked through what the project could look like and some of the things that would make the track, um, able to host WIAA sanctioned events, we learned that there were some more things that we would need to do in order to be able to make that happen. And so working with the trust, they wanted to explore some of those additional op, options to potentially increase their original donation. And so what I've got before you tonight is what the proposed, um, donation is, and it has changed a little bit, and so I wanted to share that with all of the board members and the community. So you can see original things, again, where the all-weather surface and striping and the fence. And then the list goes on from there. Field events, removing the existing long jump, removing the existing pole vault, curb nailer, and tracking pad. So those are all of the pieces that are proposed in this, um, donation in project expansion. Um, our recommendation tonight for, in front of the board for a vote is for, um, awarding the contracts. Um, we bid out all of those pieces that I just listed, and when they came back, then the Ulrich Trust decided to move forward with some of those things that were bid. They wanted to see where the dollars came in before they could, um, make a decision on, um, the ability to expand their, um, donation as well as the project. So tonight, um, we're asking for a motion to approve the following items and the contractors and the amounts. So the all-weather resurfacing and striping is proposed to be awarded to Fisher Tracks in the amount of $120,000. The fencing component of the project is being asked to award to HS Fence for $35,831. The field events, um, which would be the long jump area and the pole vault and recreating a safe area for those things to happen, would be recommended for McCabe Construction for $138,700. Removing the existing long jump, also to McCabe Construction for $3,000. Removing the existing pole vault for McCabe Construction to $4,525. The curb nailer being awarded to McCabe Construction for $54,865. Um, engineering, which had to be done prior to the bids going out, just as a reminder to the board, was awarded to Rettler Corporation, and that dollar amount was $13,164. And then the final award we're asking for tonight is for the tracking pad, and that's awarded to McCabe Construction for $8,000. So on behalf of the, um, school district, we wanted to send a sincere thank you to the Ulrich Trust for making this additional donation to make the project happen. We are really excited about it. It's going to bring a whole lot of opportunities for our students and our families. And so, um, before we get to the voting part, I wondered if the school board had any questions or anything further that they would like to discuss.
Abby, thank you. This is certainly an exciting project. Comments and questions from board members?
Pretty quiet, so everybody must be ready.
I have a quick comment, which is just a thank you to the Ulrich Trust for, for making this happen. It's just, it really is an amazing, uh, contribution to, to our district.
All right. So then I summarized what we just talked about to make it easy for the board to see what they are, um, being asked tonight. And so, um, the approval is asked for the additional donation from the Ulrich Trust, and that would be in the amount of $74,025. And then we just summarized the contract part of that. Um, HS Fencing for the $35,831. McCabe Construction for a total of $209,090. Fisher Tracks for the amount of $120,000. And then the curb nailer, which I didn't explicitly call out earlier, um, but that was something that, as we were going through the project determined needed to be done now, because we know that there's potential future expansion for a turf field. And so rather than, um, not do it now and have to tear up the work that's being done, um, we talked and looked at our budget and the five-year capital plan, and we are able to commit, um, the additional dollars needed to get that curb installer, or the curb nailer installed now, so that way then we are protecting that donation from the Ulrich Trust. Um, in addition, the Ulrich Trust is donating $10,000 towards the cost of that curb nailer, and so that reduced the cost to the district. So that is everything that I have, um, for the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks again. Additional questions from board members? Hearing none, I would continue the motion regarding this item.
So moved?
Second?
Uh, moved for approval by Dr. Torres, and seconded by Commissioner Clements, if I heard correctly. Uh, this is a financial item, so we will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes, and thank you to the Ulrich Trust.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Right, the motion has passed. Uh, thanks once again on behalf of the board and the district to the Ulrich Trust for this gift. We'll now adjourn to committee. Our first committee report is the hourly employee work update.
Thanks, Tim. This, um, I think that, um, maybe Marissa is going to take controls of this one for me. Wonderful. Thank you, Marissa. Uh, so this is a report, um, that's a follow-up to the crest, request from last school board meeting, where we were asked to provide an update related to, um, hourly employees and the work that was being done during the mandated school closure period. So both Abby and I will be providing information on this for you tonight. Um, Marissa, if I could just have you move on to the next slide. So as you can see, um, tonight's presentation aligns to the district's strategic plan through its prior, priority for highly qualified staff. Um, and before we dive into everything, it's important to consider the mandated school closures in periods of time. So we've kind of blocked them into the information that came from the governor's office in the initial, the initial closure, which went from March 17th to April 3rd, then the mid-closure, which was from April 6th to April 24th, and then the final closure, which was from April 16th, and for us, it'll go through June 5th. Um, what makes this piece important, um, as we look at the work being done by hourly employees during this time, is that the work varies depending on the closure period, because the expectations, the responsibilities, and and the work that's available during each of those time periods differs for the hourly employees. So for example, um, with the initial closer, initial closure, there was either little or no preparation for the district, um, regarding the fact that the closure was coming. Um, and it was anticipated when the closure did occur that our students and staff are going to be back in two weeks. So with that in mind, there wasn't any long-term planning or big projects that we, um, had available for staff to do during that period of time. And so that was kind of the mindset during that initial closure. It happened quickly. We anticipated people were going to be back. And so that was, that was kind of the mindset during that time period. And then when we looked to the mid-closure, um, when that period of time kept, or, but when that period of time came, um, at that point in time, then students and staff were kept away for an additional three weeks, uh, for an additional three-week period. So there we had to consider it like the what-ifs. And so then it was all about what if students and staff aren't allowed to come back? Um, so that period was more targeted and directed in the work that was available, um, because we had that or, original time to be able to think about what's going to happen if students and staff aren't allowed to return. So that, that chunk of time was a little bit more focused and targeted on what was available for staff, um, because there's just more time for us to be able to anticipate that. And by the time the final closure period rolled around and that announcement was made, um, we were more or less anticipating that that decision was going to happen. And that there was a pretty good case to be made that students and staff weren't going to be allowed to come back into our building. Um, and as you heard last week when Jim, or the, the last board meeting when Jim talked about all the work that went into creating the essential learning standards and all the work that our teachers are doing with our students, um, knowing now that there's no opportunity for staff and students to be re-entering our buildings, it, um, and to be able to finish the school year, there's no typical environment now, um, for anybody to come back to. So it really provides us an opportunity to, um, evaluate the positions and determine whether or not a need still remains. Because we know now, going forward, that there's no, there's no opportunity for things to change. We know what, we know what the landscape's going to be from now until the end of the year. So it provides us a better understanding of what, what's needed for each one of those positions. Um, so it, it really provides an opportunity for us to take a deeper look into what we need and what people are able to provide in the time that's remaining. Um, so with those points in mind, um, relating to the school closure periods and having some kind of clear idea where the district's going to be and what the need and the assistance is going to be made, or is, is going to be, um, for those certain time periods, um, we're going to have Abby talk a little bit about, um, opportunities that were made available to hourly employees outside of their normal work duties. Um, because in each one of those segments of time, there were certain areas of the district that needed a lot more support than other areas. Um, but that was all dependent upon the period of time and, um, and the amount of time that we were given to be able to figure out what we needed, when we needed it, how much support was needed at that point in time. So Abby, if you want to take us into that piece?
Sure. Thanks, Kay. Um, so yeah, kind of like Kay talked about, we had three buckets of time. And so when the initial, um, closure happened, we were trying to brainstorm really quickly where, um, we needed additional help and what that would look like. And so one of the obvious places that we started was within buildings and grounds, um, because we knew we wanted to clean our facilities. And at that point, we thought that we would be back in a couple of weeks. And so our approach was all hands on deck. Let's get our buildings cleaned and sterilized and ready for kids to come back. Um, as that went on a little bit longer, then, um, we kind of changed our thinking a little bit. We still had some buildings and grounds needs, um, but also wondered what else we could provide for opportunities. Um, obviously, our primary concern would be our students and our families, but, um, if employees weren't able to get their, all of their regular hours in connecting with students and families, we wanted to have some additional opportunities for those hourly employees. Um, so we did, um, add during that second closure or towards the end of the first one, we added our Meals on Yellow Wheels program for our students, and so, um, limited positions available for that. But we do have, uh, four buses that go out every day, and I believe we have two staff people, um, that, um, could be food and nutrition, but it might be somebody else from a building depending upon, um, staff availability. And then, um, kind of as now we've moved into the final stages and knowing that we're not coming back, some of those works are, some of those positions are starting to dwindle. Um, so, uh, So our buildings are very clean and also have been disinfected. And now we know that summer school is going to be online. And so we're currently evaluating what does that look like? And what opportunities will staff have that need to be able to get their hours in? Obviously, the Meals on Yellow Wheels will continue for quite some time because we plan to continue providing meals to students every day. And we also have some things in the teaching and learning departments that need to get taken care of as far as getting kids ready to move up for next year. So we have some projects that come up and we coordinate them the same way. We basically provide a list of number of staff that's needed and the time and skills that are required. And then Marissa's been our go-to person to kind of coordinate to make sure that we're practicing social distancing and making sure that we don't have too many people in a building at once. And so I would say that's gone pretty well, but it's an evolving need, and there's always new things coming up as we're going through this process.
Thanks, Abby. So when we looked at the hourly position summary, we took each one of our categories for the hourly positions and looked at those bucketed into each one of those position closure time periods. And really dug into what it was that those positions were doing during those closure periods. So for example, if you look at the first one, the twelve-month hourly positions. So for an example, these positions would be positions that you'd find in the payroll department, HR, accounting, secretaries in our secondary buildings, the enrollment office, and both Marissa and Meta, who you work with very closely. So it shouldn't be a surprise that these positions, regardless of the closure period, nothing really changed in terms of their duties and responsibilities. Everything stays the same, they just do as much as they can remotely. And obviously, accounting, HR, payroll needs to go into the building to do things to make sure that bills get paid and employees get paid. But other than that, they're working remotely as much as they can. But otherwise, those those positions, they continue to do the duties as they normally would. Food nutrition positions, as Abby mentioned, when she talked about the different opportunities that we had, there was a big push early on to make sure that we were creating a plan to get meals to our to our students. And so in the beginning, in that first initial closure period, our food nutrition folks were able to serve up just shy of eighteen thousand five hundred meals to our students in that first two-week period. Then you can tell that as time went on and we had more opportunities available for hourly staff to help out because we again knew that that's where the need was. We served approximately thirty-five hundred, sorry, thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty meals to students in that second chunk of time. And then in the final closure period, as of just last week, Friday, we were just over thirteen thousand meals. And obviously, we still have quite a bit of time to go yet. So you can see that the food nutrition folks are busy making sure that our students are getting what what it is they need when when they can't be in the buildings with us. Abby talked about the Buildings and Grounds crew. In the first two chunks of time, you can see that they were busy doing the items that Abby talked about, making sure that our buildings were getting clean and disinfected in those first two buckets of time. And now, knowing that students aren't coming back, they're able to jump ahead and start with cleaning what they would normally take care of in the summertime and jumping into summer projects. So so their their work again and responsibilities has changed based upon the timing of the closure and and what they're able to accomplish. When we looked at our ten-month student support positions, our bilingual education assistants, special education assistants, general education assistants, and healthcare assistants, during that initial closure period, again, without a lot of time to plan and certainty about when things were going to be planned and organized and thinking that students were coming back, they really did a lot of, you know, they they did selected tasks in that beginning. So there was checking in on students, checking with them to see how their transition was going. Do they need additional support? Sometimes it was just making sure that kids were okay because that first initial closure piece was just kind of a shocker to a lot of people. And so that first chunk of time was a lot of just reaching out to students. There's also a lot of professional development time that was either related to their specific area of responsibility or it was related to offerings that the district has through our employee achievement program. But then when you moved on to the mid-year, or sorry, the mid-closure time period, at that point in time, opportunities became more assigned because we had a clear understanding of what what it was that we needed our students and family, we needed for our students and families. At that point, more connections were made with students that were of an academic and support focus. There was a greater emphasis on connecting with families, maybe families that we hadn't had a lot of response from previously. So we're we're focusing on certain families to make sure that there was a connection and did they need anything? So more of a targeted approach. Specifically, our SEAs started to reach out to families to determine if additional supports were needed in the areas of IEPs. Our BEAs began translating either course material or documents for the district. So there is more targeted work in their specific areas because that period of time extended. Again, professional development opportunities and then the other hourly opportunities that Abby had spoken about earlier. And then once we got to the final closure time, in addition to all the things that they were working on in mid-closure time, they continued to work on, just again, the greater emphasis of student support, both academically, socially, emotionally, and then connecting with families. Again, a greater emphasis in those two areas in that final closure time. But based upon the work that those positions do during this final closure time, it would be a point in time where we, as the district, would look to determine, is this something the responsibilities that these positions are taking care of? Is this something that we would continue to need in in this final stretch of time? Are there many positions that are looking for opportunities that Abby had described for us earlier that we were creating for people in those earlier timeframes that aren't necessarily available anymore? And if that's the case, then is that a position that's still being needed? So we would look to evaluate that during this time period. Ten-month clerical positions would be our elementary building secretaries and our secondary office assistants. Again, these positions, the ten-month building secretaries are very much like the twelve-month positions that we talked about up on the top of the chart, very similar. They're just doing their tasks and trying to do as much as they can remotely. And then the secondary office assistants, those positions typically would be supporting the secondary offices when the buildings are open. So there isn't a lot that those positions can do remotely. So they're probably the biggest utilizer of the positions or the responsibilities that Abby had talked about in terms of other hourly positions that we needed help with along the way. And they would have been the employees to reach out and take advantage of the opportunities that Abby had alluded to earlier. So again, in the first time, first closure, they had done selected tasks, professional development, and the other opportunities Abby had mentioned. The mid-closure was more assigned tasks and projects because there was just longer periods of time. And then at this point in time, again, it would be something that we'd look to evaluate as to whether or not those positions are needed as we look to close out the final, the final period of the school year. Long-term substitutes in the classified area, obviously, that's not an hourly position, but just because we're talking about subs, we figured we'd throw it in just to say that they have remained on staff. These would be our long-term teachers, our long-term sub-teachers. They've remained on staff and just like our regular certified staff, they've offered support to our students in supplemental learning during those first two closure periods. And now in this final closure period, they've worked on the essential at-home learning that Jim had described last week. And our long-term hourly subs, again, in that first closure period, we only thought it was going to be for two weeks. So we certainly kept them on anticipating that in two weeks, they would, everybody would be back in the buildings, and we would certainly need those positions to complete tasks, so they they were kept on. Then in the mid-closure period, we had them working on longer projects and bigger assignments. And since that point in time, once those things were completed, nearly all of those positions have been terminated and are no longer working for us, those long-term hourly subs. And at this point in time, we're reviewing whether or not there's still a need for the handful that still exist and if we need them to complete the remainder of the final closure period or if it's positions that, responsibilities that other remaining permanent physicians can complete for us. And daily substitutes, they haven't been with us at all during this closure time. There isn't anything that we've had daily subs take care of during this time, so they've never been reporting to begin with. Marissa, the next slide, please. So that was a lot of information related to a lot of different positions with varying amounts of responsibilities and expectations during three different time periods that things were a little chaotic and then kind of chaotic, and then things have now settled down somewhat. So are there any questions that either Abby or I can respond to that board members would have?
Thank you, Kay and Abby, for all the hard work that you and your staffs are doing during this time. It was it was good to hear an update. Questions and comments from board members? Well, then it seems you've hit the nail on the head, Kay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to the next item in our agenda, which is the 2020, 2021 Employee Handbook modifications.
That's also me. Thank you, Marissa. So just to give a little background, every year, the Employee Relations Committee, which is made up of employees throughout the district, meets to review any issues or concerns that are brought up by employees related to a multitude of things. The way the process works is each building in the district has a building improvement committee. That committee submits their monthly meeting minutes to me. I review those minutes each month and I respond to any outstanding questions that the building may have that the principal couldn't answer. I look for themes in those minutes to see if there's something that's coming up in various buildings or multiple buildings that would be something that would need to be addressed from a district standpoint. And if it's something that I can't address simply from an employee handbook standpoint, then it's something I take to the Employee Relations Committee and bring it up as a topic of information that I feel that the the group of employees should address for further information. Sometimes that information ends up as a modification to the employee handbook. Other times, it's just something that we respond back to the building as a clarification. But regardless, any modifications to the employee handbook all go through the EERC, the Employee Relations Committee, for their input and consideration. And this is the point in time each year where we bring those modifications to the board for consideration for modifications to be effective to the July one handbook for 2020. So each year, I love the fact that the modifications become less and less. That means that we're getting closer and closer to having a handbook that is more appropriately meeting the needs of our employees. So with this year's modifications, the first one, so when I address the modifications, it'll be based upon the red number on the left-hand margin. So number one is just, it relates to the table of contents. And the actual part that's changing will address further down in the modifications. But number one is just changing the table of contents, which the actual content changes later on in a different in a different number. So number two is in part one of the employee handbook, which affects all employees. It relates to personnel files, and this simply changes the language to indicate that we no longer have hard copied personnel files, they are electronic, and so it changes language to indicate that. It just updates the the practice from hard copy files to electronic files. Number three?
Oh, excuse me, Kay, it's Lori.
Sure.
It's just the possessive, the possessive form on employees, so number two.
Thank you. Thank you. Number three, this came as a recommendation from our district's legal counsel to update our grievance procedure language, indicating that our language hadn't been updated since the handbook went into place in 2012. And so indicating it was just a little out of date. So what this is saying is that in the previous this language said that the IHO, the independent hearing officer, should we be in a grievance? Our language had indicated that the IHO would be selected by the superintendent and Marissa, if you could just scroll up a little bit. Nope, the other way, sorry. Just so we can see the yellow, there you go, thank you. The superintendent and the grievant or the grievance representative. And then specifically highlights the WERC or the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission Council. Back when Act 10 went into place, WERC was kind of like the go-to place for IHOs. And as time has gone on, WERC has whittled down to only three people at the WERC who actually are certified as an IHO. And so the legal counsel indicated we should really take that out because it it kind of pigeonholes us to go to a specific area when really there's, you know, they're they're pretty limited. And so it was that IHO shall be determined by the district with input from the grievance, but not that it's, you know, a joint decision between the two. And then the other part that was recommended that be changed is that previously or currently, it indicates that the cost is solely buried by the school district. And that, again, was recommended that it be changed so that there's at a minimum that we indicate that there's a filing fee that the employee would be paying, which currently is at seventy-five dollars. So that there's some responsibility apart of the employee so that there aren't, you know, a rampant running of grievances being filed because it can do so for free. I think that's known districts where relationships between the two parties perhaps maybe aren't as positive as what they are in our district. This might be a real big issue. We haven't seen this being a big issue in our district, but that doesn't, I mean, that could change at any point in time depending on all the parties involved, but we haven't had issues in these areas. I think this is just something that they're saying over the years, things have changed and our language is a little outdated. So that's why it was being recommended. Number four is an update to the pay periods. This is updating what has changed to meet practice. So this is indicating that salaried employees have the option to choose their pay period over a twelve-month or twenty-four-month pay period, but that hourly employees do not. So that's updating what the practice has now changed to. And number five comes out of the business office with a mileage reimbursement update indicating that this is applicable to employees who are required to drive for the district with their personal vehicles. And takes out the piece related to the forms because uh, takes out the piece related to um, the forms because uh, or the exact amount because things change based on the IRS and the exact mileage amount. So um, this is all updated to reflect that piece. Uh, number six was recommended by our District's Workers' Compensation Specialist Consultant. Um, this is basically saying that in the event that we have an employee who's hurt or injured in the course of their employment, which limits them from being able to return to work um, in a full-time status, that um, we may offer them light duty um, during their healing period, consistent with the restrictions, obviously, from the medical provider. However, the second uh, paragraph here gets into the fact that um, that same employee um, is responsible basically for following those restrictions outside of work as well. And that if they are found to have been um, violating those restrictions outside of work, um, that there are, there are um, the con, basically consequences for that. So, you know, if you can't come to work because you've hurt your back and there are all these restrictions about your movement and you can't work because of a sore back, but then you're seeing roofing your neighbor's house, there's, there's issues with that. And so the Workers' Compensation Specialist indicated that we don't have any such um, language to that effect and that there needed to be. And so that's why this, this component was added here. Um, number seven was um, just an update that was missed in the last round of modifications. When an early retirement date was changed, there was a section that was missed. So that's just matching with the current practices. Number eight, uh, this is what goes back to the first one, uh, number one, um, the Head Start Classroom Assistant. This title is being moved from part five, non-affiliated employees um, to part three, the hourly employee section. This um, particular employee title and position was placed in this part of the handbook originally because it related back to um, the bargaining language from old contracts. And it had to do with bumping rights and none of that language exists anymore, nor does the practice exist. So the pay and benefits of this particular position um, follows everything related in section three of the employee handbook. Um, and even says further on in this section that these employees follow everything related and benefits to employees in section three. So um, it's appropriate to move this out of this area and back into section three. Um, so all the employees in this group will be notified after the board approves the handbook modifications to let them know that this doesn't change anything related to their benefits so that no one panics about anything. Um, everything remains the same for them. It's just simply putting their title where it belongs in the handbook. Number nine, um, this one has to do with, other than the capitalization pieces, it's additional language that we added to part B, uh, or sorry, part B, or sorry, part D was removed in order to comply with FLSA laws. Yep, flex time, um, yes. So all of this has to do with FLSA laws and being able to um, take flex time. These, the positions that we're speaking about here would be, um, for example, like Maida's position. And so this piece needed to be updated and the compensation piece, the comp time piece taken out because that no longer um, applies in FLSA laws. Uh, number 10, uh, 10, 11. And I think, yes, 10 and 11 both tie back to the Head Start Assistant Position and just eliminating their titles from areas that they don't fit. You can see here, it says these positions will follow all benefits outlined in part three of the handbook. So um, that's again, where those positions fit and where they belong, which is why it's being deleted from this section. So, um, again, the majority of items here were um, in some, some ways, more so clerical than substantive. And so there, there wasn't a lot, um, from the ERC's um, aspect, a lot of um, party conversation about a lot of these changes. So any questions on any of this?
Thank you again, Kay. Questions for board members? Well, that appears to be two very thorough presentations. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, at this time, I will ask for requests for future agenda items. And unless uh, practice is going to change, I believe agenda setting will be at 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. Is that correct, Maida or Dr. Hardback?
Yes, we can do agenda setting as, you know, as long as you are available and Dr. Beek is available. And I'm not quite sure who our third person is tomorrow.
I don't think we had that identified yet um, until I knew who the president and vice president would be. I couldn't determine the order. Um, so I'm not sure if we, if you would be interested in just taking a volunteer for the morning.
Uh, I'm available at 8:00 AM tomorrow. Dr. Beek, are you?
Yes, I am.
Uh, any of our board colleagues willing to step up for tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM for agenda setting?
I, I could be available.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. We'll go with that. And Maida, you can build the rotation around that starting point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as my wonderful predecessor, Dr. Torres's want to do, I will note the time. It is 8:56 PM and I would be happy to hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clements and seconded by Dr. Beek. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.